All right, this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? All right, this time we'll begin our meeting by approving an amended agenda. The amended agenda is to include a resolution for pre-K tuition under the Board Business Section. So at this time, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Jeremy, second. Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, before starting public comment, I've had some conversations with people who have found loud comments inside conversations in the audience distracting during previous meetings. Please refrain from these behaviors. Reminder, this is a meeting held in public according to the older meetings law and it's not a public participation meeting. Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain public comments. As a board, we value your input from the public. Please direct your comments to the Board of Education. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. At the three-minute mark, we'll politely thank you for your comments. If anybody is interested, we'll ask you to please come to the table or microphone and state your name and address for the board to clear the record. Are there any community members that would like to speak?
My name is Stacy Pickering. I live at 498 Ridge Road here in Ontario. Good evening. I've been following the meetings throughout the transition process and have seen many people take claims that have not been entirely true. As a parent of a graduate, second, fourth, and sixth grader, I have a vested interest in what happens in our district. My son is among the group that will be the first fifth grade to attend the middle school, and I have faith in our teachers that he will receive the same level of education that he always has. Many people come to this table to bash the board and broadcast half-truths. I came tonight to clarify and make sure I understand future changes. I do not understand why people would promote false information while having their name on signs boasting transparency and being a voice for our children. My first question is regarding the recent lecture from Herman Boone. It was spread through Facebook on the One Wayne page that this event was costing the district $30,000. Through research, I have found that the actual cost was approximately $8,000, which was 70 percent both sees aidable, which figures roughly $2,600. Is this correct? Due to prior engagements, my family was unable to attend. However, I have heard great things and I'm wondering if the lecture was recorded so people who missed it can see it. At the last meeting, students and community members came to defend the music program. I completely respect that as three of my children so far have participated in band and/or chorus. Please correct me if I am wrong. It was said that moving band and chorus would jeopardize the programs and the kids would have to choose between music and sports or clubs. By asking the school and not someone who spreads hearsay, I was able to find out that only band and chorus moving out of the school day is for fifth and sixth grades. This says to me that the real difference in the way things are now and the way things will be is that fifth graders' chorus will continue outside of the school day just in the afternoon instead of in the morning. At the same time, the sixth grade will have band and chorus moved out of the school day. The concern is that we will see a decline in participation due to this change. This will not be a change for any of these kids. The incoming sixth graders do not know it any other way, and as for sports, fifth and sixth graders are not eligible for modified anyways. On that note, making changes or making choices is part of life. Scheduling at the high school seems to be allowing for more choice. I am excited that when my daughter gets to ninth grade, she will have the opportunity to take a few extra classes that she chooses. My oldest son dealt with this conflict when he was still in school. He had to choose between band, which he enjoyed, Spanish, which was needed for college, and other elective classes that he really wanted to try out. Unfortunately, he was not able to try that other class and he missed out on an opportunity. Again, I understand change is difficult. I respect our teachers wholeheartedly, but why is this schedule changing such a big deal? When I attended this school, we had six 50-minute period day and a four-day cycle, which seemed to work out allowing myself and my peers to be exposed to many possible career paths. Speaking with teachers from all their areas, I hear both pros and cons from the block schedule. With that said, as long as the teachers get the planning time and lunch breaks that their contracts award them, the schedule should not be an issue. Another thing I am excited to hear about is the opportunity for elementary kids to start a foreign language and the plan for a possible IB at the elementary level. Hearing community members bashing the administration for getting a raise while all of these changes are occurring is ridiculous. School administration are contract positions and is written in their contract to get a raise. For those that have issue with these raises, look at the other side of the aisle. Teachers receive raises yearly as well, also protected by the contract. Looking into the contract shows that teachers had the teachers' raises a higher percentage than they have the administrators.
You're at the three-minute mark, so please.
Okay. I just, in closing, I want to say thank you to the board for the decisions that nobody else to make them, that nobody else wanted to make. Thank you to the Freewill parents who understand that change was necessary and although it sucks, we will have to move forward and become One Wayne. And I, for one, cannot support a man that referred to the Children of Ontario in a board meeting behind me as, I quote, "heathens." That is not someone who will be the voice of us taxpayers or our children. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. Daniel Wood, 4309 West Walworth Road. At last week's meeting, one of you made a comment in retaliation to something that I stated. The comment was, and I quote, "There seems to be some misunderstanding of the role of the Board of Education. The role of the Board of Education is not to represent Walworth or Ontario or Williamson or Wester. The role of the Board of Education is to represent Wayne Central," end quote. So I decided to look up what the purpose of a school board is, seeing that in your eyes I am misinformed. So I went to the website for the National School Board Association. And with no more than 20 seconds on their website, I read the following. Consider these five reasons that the school board, who represents your community's belief and values, should be the decision-makers in today's schools. Education is not a line item in your school board's budget. It is the only item. The school board represents the public's voice in public education, providing citizen governance for what the public schools need and what the community wants. Your school board sets the standards for achievement in your district, incorporating the community's view of what students should know and be able to do at each grade level. Your school board is accessible to you and accountable for the performance of your school and your district. If the schools are not producing, use your right as a voter to select new board members who will see to it that your students and schools succeed. Your school board is your community's education watchdog, ensuring that taxpayers get the most for their tax dollars. This is now probably the fifth or sixth time that I've gotten up in front of you guys to talk. My tune has not changed one bit. I reiterate, I want what is best for my community. After reading what is on the NSBA's website, I feel very comfortable knowing that I do understand what the school board's purpose is, but I'm frustrated that members of my school board do not. I still can't believe that some of you state that you do not care nor represent the community. I at least, or should I say we, are Ontario and Walworth residents first and foremost, Wayne Central participants second. I'm not asking you to set up a T-ball game at the community center, but I am telling you is that you need to listen to your community. You work for the community, not him and his administration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hello. My name's Carla Weeden. I live at 5247 Swatling Road. Community member, former Wayne Central graduate, but I come so more for my professional career. I'm a drug and alcohol counselor and mental health therapist. I work with a lot of teens, some Wayne Central kids as well, along with other Wayne County residents, Fairport kids. In light of current events and issues, I'm curious about what the school plans to do to help increase awareness about mental health, substance abuse, and all of those issues. Clearly, it's on the rise in light of the new TV series, Thirteen Reasons Why, the unfortunate suicides in some of our other schools and ours. I am privy to the knowledge to know that the budget proposal proposes a loss of a mental health therapist or counselor and health teacher, and I'm a little concerned that that might eliminate some resources along with the increase of all of these issues. So just curious about the plan moving forward and how to continue to address these issues as they're on the rise, but also with less resources. Thank you.
Carrie Wood, 4309 West Walworth Road. Several months ago, parents received an email regarding a Facebook Live video of a young girl committing suicide in another state. Just yesterday, we received an email about the next Netflix show also dealing with suicide. I find it shameful and reprehensible that we have heard nothing about the alleged sexual assault that took place in this building. We didn't get a letter. We didn't get an email. The superintendent didn't speak to the news, and I find it disturbing that it appears to be getting swept under the rug. As a parent, as an aunt of two middle school children in this school district, I demand to know what happened, how it was allowed to happen, and what you're doing to prevent it from happening again, and shame on you for not doing your job. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? This time, we'll move on to board member comment. Do any board members that would like to make a comment? Pam?
Couple things. I attended the speech that Coach Boone gave. What a great speaker, very motivational, wonderful man, very kind man, and really had a good message. And I know we heard from a few of the people that were, as they were leaving, and the kids, they were so excited. I mean, he actually spent time and took pictures with everybody and signed their DVDs, which he really didn't have to do. It was very good and will receive for the people that were there. And secondly, I'm going to raise one of our seniors' level of concern because I'm going to say his name. At the senior projects that I observed, one young man, I believe his name is Jordan Stransky, gave his project on e-waste and recycling of e-waste, and it was a phenomenal presentation. After I got done with my time with the projects, I met up with Dr. Calvin and John Smith, and we were chatting, and I was telling him how impressed I was with this young man, and John Smith actually said he might be a good kid to have come and present at one of our tri board meetings. So I'd just like to bring that thought up, and if people think that's a good idea, we might want to look into it. Very, very well-done project and very interesting, and it might even be something we might do here at the district.
Is that something we'd like to have done? This consensus? All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Jeremy?
Last week, I was able to take a half-day from work to attend the Smile Day Assembly over at the elementary school. My daughter received the Citizen Extraordinaire, which was a pretty proud moment for us, but for me, sitting there watching the staff and the students' interactions is just amazing because I know where I work is a K-8 building, and I see chaos every day. I see a group of people who, when an adult stands up, says, "Good morning, how are you?" And the kids all react in unison to a "good morning, how are you?" respectfully. It's pretty amazing. Also, I want to give some credit to Andrea Fiola, the art teacher at the elementary school. For the past three years now, my daughter has been there, and she, I'm guessing, puts it up for all the students on the website, Artsonia. She'll share kids' artwork so the parents can see it. I know my family enjoys it because my in-laws are across the state, so they don't get to see everything, while they're added in so you can comment back to the student. And another proud moment of my daughter, I gotta talk to my son about catching up to his sister. She was nominated, so she is in the running for a national award for one of her projects on the website. And then I believe Amy shared that today. I did not know that was coming until I saw it on Facebook that you can go on and vote on the different pictures. And that's just one of the things I, to Ms. Fiola, that's not something she has to do. That's above and beyond, and that is just one of the great examples of our staff going above and beyond for our kids.
Thank you. Carrie?
Just a couple reminders. June 2nd is the Relay for Life in the school district, and now teams. You can go on the relayforlife.org website and either type in 14520 or look up Wayne Central to start making your teams. It is a whole community event throughout the district, so encourage anybody to sign up for their teams. Another reminder, next Friday, May 12th, the opening ceremony begins at 9:45 at North Rose Wilkit High School. It is the Special Olympics for the entire area around here, so if anybody is interested in just going, please go to North Rose Wilkit and support all of our Wayne students. And then finally, this week is Staff Appreciation Week, and it's been a tough year, but you personally just want to thank all the teachers and staff in all of the buildings and departments for just really continuing to push through a lot of changes. It is noticed and appreciated, and to all of our parent groups or PTOs who have been working, whether it was before this week, this week, next week, or moving forward, providing either luncheons or just trinkets or just recognition for all of our staff for all of the work that they do. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
One of the items on our agenda tonight is a memorandum of agreement with Gates-Chile Central School District to provide an opportunity for our students to participate with them in a hockey program. I hope that the board will approve that agreement, and I would just like to say I'd like to extend a thank you to the Athletics Department for making it possible for those students who are interested in hockey to participate at an interscolastic level at very little cost to the district.
Thank you. Carl?
I too went to the coach last week, Coach Boone, and was thoroughly enjoyed my time with him. And it's kind of coincidental that this young lady spoke about mental health issues. NISBA, which is the School Board Association, is offering not Mother's Day weekend, but the following weekend, a conference on mental health issues for school board members, and I am attending that. So this board is aware, and we are doing our best. But I want to just take a few minutes to express myself because I too, like Ms. Pickering said, have kind of had it up to here with the untruths and misconceptions of some students, staff, and community members. And regarding music and arts, as a daughter who's an artist, it's very important to me, the arts. And please understand, no music programs are being cut. As Ms. Pickering also said, I think she hid my speech, if students were in a typical K-6 building at the elementary level, their day would end at 3 o'clock, which is exactly when their day is going to end with band or chorus after the school day. It's never been graded. It's not being graded. Contrary to our young student who spoke about music and sports very eloquently last week, students in grades seven and eight who are involved in chorus or band will continue to have chorus and band during the school day. Their day will end, and they will have time for homework and prepare to be ready for their modified sports team games or practices. Band and chorus for grades seven and eight was never going to be after school. This is regarding our superintendent, which many people have maligned. Dr. Calvin was not hired to close Freewill. This board has set goals of transparency and fiscal responsibility. Everything in this district is available on our website, from our budget to anything that's going on. This was not always the case, and this board insisted upon having everything out there. After our former superintendent left, we hired an interim to help bring the Wayne community together while we searched for a new superintendent. The goal of the board, as well as the staff and community members on the focus hiring group, was to hire someone who was ethical, honest, upfront, educated, and experienced. Dr. Calvin has proven to us that this, he has these traits. Upon his hiring, he began to meet with stakeholders and delve deep into what was really occurring at Wayne. He discovered inefficiencies, fiscal issues, and that our district had no strategic plan. In turn, consultants were hired to review all aspects of our district and make recommendations. Many of these findings were eye-opening to this board, and we knew we had to make some changes. A vote was held on what best process was. We may not have all agreed, but as a board, you work as a whole to move forward, and that is what we are doing. Our stakeholders involved in the strategic plan are also moving toward the district goals and missions. Regarding scheduling, this is not a new area of concern for this board. We've been reviewing scheduling and course offerings for a few years. We asked administration to look at ways to being able to offer our students more. It is the administration's duty of each district to look at staffing needs. Decreased enrollment requires less staff. That is just a fact. We are not asking, nor would we ever ask, any teacher teach beyond their contract. Each year, we are asked to approve a new course, but in the back of my mind is, where will our students fit this in their schedule with block scheduling? Our new secondary schedule will offer students the ability to choose an additional class and opportunities and be able to share staff between buildings. Transitions. I've heard it over and over again. Many of you said to us, "Our students are going to have too many transitions. Would you have preferred that our incoming students to the high school or middle school get used to the current schedule being used and then have an entire new schedule to get used to next year?" Moving students' staff and changing the schedule at the same time is, in my opinion, the best practice. Move forward, rip the Band-Aid off, and get everyone on board at the same time. Every staff member and student in this district will have an adjustment next year. No building, no staff member, no one is left untouched. However, I truly feel that these changes will give our students more opportunity for enrichment, increase the ability for our struggling students to obtain help, and equalize our buildings and bring fairness to staff. Not being able to speak to the board, I've heard that. I heard it last weekend. "Oh, I can't talk to you. We've been told that you can't talk to us. I can't talk to you." Dr. Calvin has explained the protocol process for addressing issues for staff to the nth degree. He's never forbidden us to talk to staff or for staff to talk to us. Speaking to a board member about these changes is perfectly acceptable to this board and to the superintendent. However, specific problems with a staff member, a student, or a classroom issue needs to go through the proper channels to benefit everyone. If you, as a staff member, have gone through the protocol and feel your issue has not been addressed, you are free to reach out to us. Lastly, I want to address something I heard from a parent in the Freewill community. This man had children attend Freewill and a spouse who worked at Freewill. He is sad to see Freewill close, but realizes that a building half-full is not productive for his hard-earned tax dollars to be spent. He watched our board meeting videos and reviewed every aspect of the comprehensive study and understood that changes needed to be made. He further related, he felt one campus would benefit all students and allow staff and the district to be fiscally responsible, and the new secondary schedule changes would allow staff to be shared between buildings. He understood the tax cap and our limitations surrounding it and other fiscal issues. However, the biggest takeaway I had was that, he said, "It's not about Walworth or Ontario. It's about Wayne Central, and that is our community." Serving on the board is what some consider a thankless place to be. I consider it an honor to serve the students and staff of this district that I hold in my heart as someone who walked these halls 40 years ago and will celebrate their 40th reunion with classmates this summer. But I have friends, and I use that in quotes, and community members who no longer speak to me, and have lost countless hours of sleep in the past. If only it was pounds instead of sleep. However, I enjoy serving my community and the students, and will continue working with this board to move this district forward. I thank you for your time. This has just been something that I had to get off my chest and make people aware of the misconceptions that some have, and I thank you all for your time and my fellow board members.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dennis?
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about the TSA kids from last week. They went Friday into the competition in Oswego. They did pretty good. I've got some pictures and some video of it, and I'm going to try to get it to Amy and see if she can't post it. We did get everything done Thursday night. It was a push, but we got it done. Also, this past Saturday, was it Saturday or Sunday? I don't know. They blend together now. There was a chess tournament at Freewill that I attended. It was well-attended, and it was very fun to watch all the kids work quite hard on their chess tournament. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Anything else? Jeremy?
Sorry. Events at Freewill. I saw something today, and I don't know the date. I'm sorry. That they have their upcoming carnival? So... Just to let everybody know.
Thanks. Okay, at this time, I'd like the superintendent to write his report to the board. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, board. So we're going to start out with some district highlights, and by the way, my report is very brief tonight. We just met last week, so we'll just kind of go right in. First, we want to congratulate one of our students this week, Emily Welch. She is a finalist for the Women's Council 18th Annual Young Woman's Distinction Award. Modeled after the Athena Awards, the program is designed to discover high school seniors who have displayed outstanding leadership, academic excellence, and involvement in nine county, in the nine county Rochester and Finger Lakes region. So we're very proud of her accomplishment tonight. Want to just recognize her. Tomorrow, by the way, is our school lunch hero day. We're really excited about this day. We want to thank all of Wayne Central's food service employees. They are heroes, and they do a wonderful job each and every day. So tomorrow, if you see one of our lunch heroes, or if you see them as we continue forward before the year's out, we certainly invite you to congratulate them on that special day tomorrow. We're just really excited. We want to recognize them and thank them for their service and the great things they do for our kids, and so we'll be recognizing them tomorrow. And as you just mentioned, Jeremy, the Freewill Carnival will be on May 20th from 3:00 to 7:00, and certainly we look forward to anyone who's available coming out and joining in at the carnival. There will be games, there will be prizes, and a lot more, so we look forward to that event on the 20th. We are now, in terms of transition items, we are now getting ready to work again with our transition team. We had a meeting scheduled for earlier in the week. Unfortunately, we had a tornado watch scare and then a pretty strong thunderstorm that came through, so we had to cancel that meeting. We will be rescheduling it in the near future to come back together with our team and discuss our next steps. As I mentioned last week, there are some upcoming meetings that will be happening for our incoming K-6 parents and students, rather. May 10th, the 11th, the 8th, and June 5th, we'll be having a number of meetings, so board members, if you are free and like to come and be a part of those meetings, you're more than welcome to be there. I will be at the meetings. Principals will be there, and they will be sharing information about next year with our K-6 parents. And then just another item we are working on, so I just want to correct some misinformation. At a previous meeting, there was a comment that, you know, the days for our staff moving were only going to be at two. That is not true. We have four days that we're offering for staff to those people who are going to be moving from one building to another, so they'll have two days, and that will be during the last week in June that they can pack up their room, and we'll have staff available on hand to help and support staff. And then in the third week in August, we'll have people... And then, in the third week in August, we'll have people back. We hope to have all the rooms all cleaned, the floors and things ready, and we'll help folks with unpacking. So total of four days there.
So that's not in the instructional calendar, those are extra days.
Those are extra days. That's correct, yes. And so we just want to make sure we support people in that way. Okay? And aside from that, just want to shift gears really quickly. Board, so we have, we just finished up our UPK lottery. Every year, the state gives to us an amount of funds. This year, they gave us, it's based on enrollment, live birth data, they'll give you some funds for UPK. You know, one of the things we look forward to, that we're planning for in the future is to bring UPK back to our district and do it on our own. But at this point, many of our kids are currently in a number of programs that we fund through this grant money that we receive from the state. We have enough now for seventy-eight students. And in order to get students into the program, there's a lottery that is required by state law that must take place. And then those children who are left over, well, they don't basically have rights to a UPK-funded program through the district. We have eight children this year that would not be accommodated for UPK. And we really feel strongly, as I know you all do, about UPK, and we want to be able to help and support all of our kids. So we've got eight kids that won't have places because they weren't able to make the lottery numbers. The cost for their tuition is about eighteen hundred dollars for the year. Total cost is fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And what we'd like to do is, if the board would approve, we'd like to be able to send those children. We did have a situation last year where we were able to offer that for kids. The tuition is so low for the year, we just believe it would be a great piece, and we want to make sure kids are on target with reading and math and science. And so if the board would be in agreement, we'd like to offer that. And we do have a PC on the table tonight, a resolution for the board, if the board would be willing to do so. Any questions about that, board, or comments?
I know in the last few years, we've always supported trying to place the kids that weren't placed according to lottery, just did some of the issues we ran into where sometimes when they didn't get the place they wanted to go for the UPK service, and that was, but we always supported that. That's why I think this would be a problem today.
And all of the eight would be going to, Michelle, the places, is it hop, skip, hop, skip, and jump, is able to take all of the eight that weren't able to get a placement? So we'd be able to place them all?
I think the evidence is pretty clear that if kids participate in pre-K, that they do better in school. And this is one of those decisions where if we spend some money up front, we may save money later on, because the kids are on track and are not behind, do not need remedial help or other assistance. So I think this is a very positive thing for us to consider doing.
Since we did it last year, I, and I completely support doing it again, because I'm in favor of bringing it all here. This is a question maybe for Greg, but since I didn't ask beforehand, I don't expect an answer. In the budget we have going, trying to get passed this year, if we run into this next year, will there be funding if there's nine kids or seven kids next year and we're not at a place where we can house UPK or something?
So certainly, it'd be something that we have to evaluate each and every year. So it depends on what happens next year, basically. So we would look to evaluate that next year when we come back. We do know for the next year, we certainly would have enough to be able to cover these particular students at this time. Okay? All right. So just to end tonight, in terms of my report, you know, just a brief overview, so we do have some more business and consent agenda items. We have some policies that we are putting before the board for approval that we're recommending. We are recommending the memorandum of agreement with Gates-Chilei Central School that Mr. Miller made reference to earlier. And then there's some gifts of scholarship funds, there is a personnel action, and then there is a designate piece for surplus property. And there is, again, the amended piece is the resolution. So with that, I'm all set unless there are other questions from the board. Okay? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, the board will move through the action items listed on the agenda. I will need a motion to approve the first reading for policies, fifteen ten, fifty-five twelve, fifty-five seventy, fifty-six sixty-one, fifty-five seventy-two, seventy-two twenty-two, and seventy-five thirty. Pam, second. Carla? Any discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, just on the wellness portion, since we have put this through first read yet again, the present federal administration has kind of changed some guidelines as far as salt intake and dietary. This current policy will cover what we need at this time until if there's future changes that come. So we will not need to make any adjustments with some of the changes at this point.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with Gates-Chilei Central School District for a hockey team. Jeremy, second. Ron? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right. At this time, I need a motion, and I will read the resolution first, for the, approve the resolution for the pre-K tuition. Resolution is, whereas Wayne Central School District received a grant from New York State to provide pre-K programming funds for students, and whereas the pre-K student enrollment exceeded the grant funds received for the pre-K program by eight students, and whereas the Board of Education wishes to subsidize the tuition of the additional eight students not funded by the grant, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Wayne Central School District authorizes the expenditure of one thousand, eight hundred, twenty-five dollars per child for a total of fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars to the daycare provider or providers to cover the cost of eight students to attend the pre-K program for the 2017-18 school year, dated May 4th, 2017. Any motion to approve that? Jeremy, second. Matt? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we now move through the following consensus agenda items. I need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Carrie? Second. Ron? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Moving right along, go to committee reports. Auto committee, Matt?
I gave the final report for our last meeting, last board meeting, and our next meeting is September, so we're off to it.
And policy and wellness, Carrie?
Policy, we are finished for the year, so there will be no more reports. And then wellness, I mentioned earlier about signing up for Relay for Life, but the next wellness committee meeting is May 9th.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to board president comments. Just a few comments I have to all of you. I just wonder what the budget would be, what the conversations would be if we didn't make some hard decisions this year, and I know it was difficult. So I'd like to thank the board, the superintendent, the administration, the Strategic Planning Committee, all the staff and the community members for their input on all the things that were worked on this year. I know using data of using all the plans or the, okay, think right, sorry. The studies, that's what I meant to say, yeah. Using all the studies, using the goals from strategic planning, the survey, and Amy, thank you for doing the budget survey, we got input from seven hundred people on what was important to them. But that, we accomplished a lot, and I think we have a pretty sound budget, and I'm proud of the work that everybody did towards that, the whole community. So I'm glad that we use that. And when you save over two million dollars less than the budget than it's been, and no use of the reserves, and support additional programs, I think that's a good thing that we did. So, again, thank you for the work you did this year, and thank you for your leadership. And that's all I have to say at this point. All right. At this time, we're going to go to exec, I need a motion to enter executive session to discuss the performance of a particular staff member and contract negotiations. Carrie, second. Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.